Inspiration of loyalty to a king or country and even.
Today is Monday, August 18th. Welcome to our Moscow City Council meeting. And we'll start things off with the pledge. Walter, would you like to lead us, sir?
Be happy to, Mayor. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Walter. A few announcements that I want to make. A couple of recognitions real quick. We've got a county commissioner in here, Dick Walliser. Dick, would you stand up so folks can see who you are? And our county treasurer, Lois Reed. I know you're back there too, Lois. So you folks can see a couple of our county officials. Thank you for joining us tonight. And before we get started on the consent agenda, we do have an amendment to the meeting tonight, and it's going to happen right after Item 5, which is the second public hearing we have tonight. So we're going to call this Item 5B. And the good faith that we have on this is because school is going to be delayed, it looks like, for the opening. And we're going to have Dwight Curtis get up and give a little presentation about some of the things that we may be able to do for the city to keep kids busy and occupied for a week or two. So just wanted to make that announcement.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to allow for that item.
Okay.
Second.
Tom made the motion to approve the amendment, followed by Art's second. We will start the roll with John Weber.
Aye.
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 Okay, so the amendment will take place. Thank you very much. And we will move on to the consent agenda. Walter.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove Item D, as in David, from the consent agenda, please.
Second that.
Okay, make note that Walter would like to remove Item D from the consent agenda as well as Tom's second, so that we can discuss. And that is the EMSI Jackson Street frontage improvements. I'm guessing Gary's going to talk about this?
Yes, he is. You want to go ahead and let me make a motion that we approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
That's what I'll say.
Okay. Walter made a motion to move to approve the rest of the consent agenda barring Item D, seconded by Tom Lamar. We'll start the roll with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, so noted those items are approved, and Item D will be pulled and presented by Gary Reedner. Gary, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have before you tonight was an item that came before the Public Works Finance Committee last week regarding the improvements, public improvements that are being proposed to be placed in front of the EMSI building, the former News Review building along Jackson Street in Moscow. This is a building that now houses EMSI. It is owned by a limited liability company, 409 South Jackson Street LLC. Mark Wince is the managing partner for that project. It was to be, the project was to improve the street. And I'm sorry, I don't have a diagram. I wasn't aware that that wasn't on the presentation tonight. But as it has been, I hope I'm not doing that, but yes. It widens the sidewalk in front of the EMSI building. It adds a new curb line, extends the sidewalk, puts in tree wells, new trees about five feet off the public right-of-way, tree grates, and new luminaires or streetlights. So it'll give it a much more urban feel along the backside of that Jackson Street. So that was presented to our Public Works Finance Committee. And the funding for that project, which is right around $100,000, we have a JEM grant that was applied for. $50,000 was granted. About $17,900 of that was used for a fiber installation project into the facility, leaving a balance of about $32,000 available for the sidewalk and public right-of-way improvements. Sidewalk program would be tapped for about $5,000. Streetlight program for about $14,000. Arts program for about $4,100. That's our tree grate program. And then the contribution from the developer would be about $45,000. When it was presented to Public Works Finance, the question came up, what would it cost to extend the project from just in front of the old News Review building all the way north to the edge of the Salvation Army building, thrift store just north of that?
North edge.
Yeah. Distance of about 83 feet. We looked into that. Les McDonald ran some numbers on that. And essentially, what it entails would actually be a pretty good deal for the city because if we were just going with the original project, a new catch basin would have to be installed at a fairly significant expense. There is a catch basin that already exists to the north of this project and could continue to be used. And the excess water would be routed at the curb line and then picked up at a catch basin to the south of the EMSI project. In essence, the difference with the saved costs for not having to fix or replace the catch basin is about $11,000. So that would be the amount of money that would be the impact to the city according to Les's calculations. We would propose that the pavement management program could cover approximately 3,000 of that. Our sidewalk program, 5,000, and a streetlight program around 900. So that's where we'd find the funding for that. Because that is a state right-of-way, Highway 95, the ITD folks, Dave Queasty, the district engineer, and his folks had approved the previous design. We knew that it takes a while to get any sort of design approved. So Scott Bontrager, the acting public works director, Bill Belknap and I traveled to Lewiston this morning, met with Dave Queasty and his deputy or assistant district engineer, Doral Hoff, showed them the design. They didn't think, or at least Dave didn't think, that posed much of a problem. However, of course, that depends on how the final plans are done. We would also have approximately $900, excuse me, in additional engineering costs. Scott Becker from Hodgins Associates designed the original project, and he has orally agreed with, or verbally agreed with Les and Scott Bontrager that it would be about $1,000 to extend that design, that additional 83 feet. So that's where we are. The cost is around $12,000 total. We do have a funding proposal. The URA, of course, is assisting in a developer participation agreement to reimburse the developer for his share of the development costs over a period of 10 years, depending on the increment that's generated from that project, specifically from that project. And I also think, as I pointed out to Public Works last week, there are no public improvements that are required by this remodel project. So the public improvements are being placed there to improve the sidewalk. The sidewalk, as you know, is, if it is ADA accessible, it is barely so. It's broken, very narrow. The tree wells are barely wide enough to get a wheelchair past the building, so on and so forth. So with that, what we're looking for is authorization to proceed with the extended project. I have had a discussion with Mr. Wince. He indicates that once he gets the design, he thinks that it's a go. Of course, it's dependent upon him wanting to expand the project and being reimbursed by the city for that additional cost.
And it's a very nice enhancement. Johnny, do you want to say something?
I just had a question. Gary, how, with this change, what is the total number of parking places that we're going to lose with the extension moving from the west to the east from the building?
Bill can correct me, but I believe it's five. Is it six? Since it's extending north?
I think with the extended area, it could be up to seven.
Could it?
That would be net total for the whole project?
That's correct.
Good.
Thank you.
Art?
Could you spend a moment and just describe what the benefits would be to the city for extending the fiber optics? The extra.
Okay. The benefits, it was entirely an economic development proposal. When we approached the Department of Commerce under the JEM grant, the idea was to assist EMSI in finding, making the facility accessible to them. They're very data-driven. They need state-of-the-art connectivity. So it was an easy sell to the JEM grant folks. They indicated that, and the cost was fairly minimal because we already had fiber, I believe, in Sixth Street, as I recall. So it was a matter of bringing it over from the alley on in. So the benefits are purely economic development. But it is a public fiber, and they are available. Council may recall that council was the one who, when we came forward with the agreement several months ago, council had questions on the amount of fiber that needed to be dedicated to EMSI's use and how much extra fiber capacity there would be. Council authorized that agreement, and that's why we moved ahead.
So in other words, it's part of the URA concept, essentially, to extend that fiber up there for future use and infrastructure of the whole larger URA area?
Thank you for pitching me that softball, yes. It is part of the overall Legacy Crossing project, which is the improvement of that area to enhance the economic development opportunities and hopefully provide some good development. Multi-use facilities, so on and so forth. So, yes, exactly so. If you, and anyone who wants to access it can go read the Legacy Crossing development plan anytime they like. It's on our website.
Walter, you pulled this. Did you have some comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I pulled it because the question of extending north up Jackson Street to the Salvation Army driveway was brought up, I believe, by Dan at Public Works. And staff at that time indicated they would look into it. When I learned earlier today that they already had and had some relatively firm answers on it, I suggested that we get the information tonight and go ahead and, if we wish, move ahead on it, if that's the desire of the council.
Tom?
I just wanted, I just wanted to add to it. And I think Dan's idea is a good one, and I think that we're going to see this money coming back. I mean, I think it's going to add to the economic development of the district and add to our ability to attract more dollars coming into the city. So I think it's a good idea.
Dan?
I guess I'll make a motion then, since I've thought of this. I'll take credit for whatever. Or blame, however you want to put it. Yeah, and that was what we were thinking because that's a, that's a natural cutoff there because of the entrance into the Salvation Army driveway for their parking there. So that was why we decided to at least go to that section. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the C's participation in the revised, revised funding plan for the EMSI frontage improvements from, and continuing that on north to the Salvation Army.
Okay. Dan made a motion to approve it, the EMSI Jackson Street frontage improvements, Item 1D on the consent agenda, with John Weber's second. I'll start the roll with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that passes, and we will move on. Thank you, Gary, very much. Okay, Item Number 2. We got through Number 1, so now we're on Number 2, folks. This is the oath of office for Brian Nickerson as our fire chief. Gary Reedner, would you, you got something you want to add, John?
Well, don't we just have to do the rest of the?
We did. We already approved it.
We already approved the rest of the consent agenda.
I must have been sleeping.
You voted on it.
You voted aye.
Anyway, the podium is to Gary Reedner.
We voted aye. We're good then. Thank you, Your Honor. I'm happy tonight to be happy circumstance that your selection for fire chief and confirmed by the city council, Brian Nickerson, will be our next fire chief of the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department. Just moved up, just came into town last night from Los Alamos, where he's moved. And he can tell you all he wants about that. But he starts work on the 25th, next Monday. So we would have had to wait until the first meeting in September to swear him in. Since he's here, we have the happy circumstance of having him sworn in tonight to be effective the day he takes office on the 25th. So with that, I'd ask Stephanie to call Chief Nickerson up.
Hope you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Idaho, and that you will faithfully discharge all the duties of fire chief of Moscow, Idaho, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Great. Every sign your hand.
One of the things I want you to do is introduce the chief from, former chief from Los Alamos with you, so the public can know who this fellow is as well.
Okay. One of my really good friends, Chief Garcia, actually helped me move up here over the weekend and stuff. He just retired about a month ago, month and a half. So I found him on the street, and he didn't have anything better to do. So he drove, he drove my truck up here for me. And we've been good friends since I've been in Los Alamos for three and a half years and really accepted me when I came, came there three and a half years ago. So he's always a good friend, and he's always welcome to come back here too, and if he wants to volunteer or something, so he's more than welcome to come. But I, you know, I thank you for the opportunity. I really do. I've met a lot of great people here. I can't tell you what their names are. I can tell you a lot, but not, not everybody. But it's, but it's a great opportunity for me. It's a great opportunity, a good fit for me, getting back to my roots where I started 25 years ago in a volunteer organization. And I could told people in my interview that 22 out of my 25 years in the fire service has been with volunteers and a few career here and there. So, and I'd like to thank Joe Williams for, you know, all his work that, that he's done since Chief Button left. And he's gave me an earful for, for two weeks and since, since I accepted the job. And I think I'm going to get the other earful next week and maybe the rest of this week. But I thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to spending the rest of my career here, next 15, 20 years.
Here's your first test.
Oh.
Did you believe everything Joe told you?
I'm going to plead the fifth of this time.
Talk about putting the guy on the spot, Wayne. That's. So, Chief Nickerson, we're, we're very well happy to have you here and have you with us and the credentials you have. We're all looking very forward to you integrating within our voluntary department in the City of Moscow.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now, Gary, a question for you after we went through that ceremony and everything. Do we have, does the council have to vote on this to approve Brian? Are we good to go?
You already did. No, you already have, and now it's official.
So you don't have to go, so you don't have to go through any more hoops, Brian. You're a wall boy.
Now, get to work.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Item 3, public comment and mayor's response period. This is for members of the public to speak. The council meetings not on the agenda, things that are not coming up tonight, not pending before the planning and zoning of the Board of Adjustment, not the subject of pending enforcement action, and not relative to a city personnel matter. And please come up, state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks, two, three minutes, if you would.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and city staff. I'm Martin Urcola. I'm the general manager with Frontier Communications. But I come before you tonight to introduce myself as the incoming president of Latah Economic Development Council. And as such, the city has been a contributor to our budgetary issues in the past. We appreciate that, and I'm looking for your support in the future. Got a lot of challenges at LEDC, and I think that with the changes in the city, with Jeff Jones' replacement, with some of the things that are happening in our own organization, it's time that we come together and work even more closely together for the betterment of Latah County, the city of Moscow, and all of our constituencies. So I ask that you consider any future budget requests from us, and I'm here to serve you guys and to work with you closely and see what we can do to better the economic revitalization and development of the entire area. So, thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Martin, a question. Does this mean you're leaving phone company?
No, I have multiple hats, like many of the members in the audience do. Mr. Steed, I still work for Frontier Communications in the economic development reign area. We will be bringing as Frontier Communications some exciting opportunities that I would like to announce in the next couple of weeks. The city will have a strong hand in how that happens, and I will be issuing some invitations to a meeting to discuss that. I also wear the vice president's hat at the Moscow Chamber, and I serve with Wayne on the smart transit board. So like all of us, we wear multiple hats in this community. So I'm not quitting my day job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're a good multitasker, Martin. Okay, others would like to come up and address the council?
He's just president of LEDC.
Not seeing anybody else rush to the podium. I'll go ahead and move on with Item Number 4, which is a public hearing for the City of Moscow for the 2015 annual budget, presented by Gary Reedner and slash Don Palmer.
Did you just slash Don Palmer's possession?
Well, you, I said slash.
Well, then I guess we've got a positive budget outcome.
Well, the thing of it is, is, there you have it. Slash river. Go right after it, Gary. Thanks, sir.
Give me just a half a second here. First of all, welcome to the FY 2015 budget. This budget was presented to the city council on the 14th and 15th of Aug, or July. That was our first budget hearing. The process started, as usual, with council goal-setting in March, proceeded to go through our process of each department head, bringing in, meeting with their staffs coming forward, bringing proposals to the city council, or excuse me, to finance department, then to my office, then meet with Mayor Lambert. What you see before you is our comprehensive line item budget document. That is a comprehensive document. It's located on our city's website. We also have a summary document, which doesn't appear to be very summary, but it explains all of the comparisons and those sorts of things that people are interested in regarding the budget. Things like budget growth, number of employees, tax rates, where the city spends its money, where the city gets its money. Very basically, of course, we have some different types of funds in the city, and I'll just review those very quickly. We have the general fund, which is a repository of general funds of the city, as the name implies. It's where we receive all of our tax funds and we, or taxes that we receipt in. We also get state shared revenues, liquor taxes, those sorts of things. We get fees for community development services, such as building permits, so on and so forth. General fund typically is one of those funds where it is unrestricted. So the council is free to spend most of those monies unless they're from a dedicated source on whatever the council wishes to put forth. The general fund is not dedicated specifically to any specific purpose. Then we have enterprise funds or proprietary funds. Enterprise funds are our three utilities. Utilities meaning the sanitation fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. These are user funds that charge rates, and those rates are what keeps those funds afloat. We operate them like a business. We retain earnings. We build funds toward capital projects, so on and so forth. They don't move back and forth. Funds do not move between these budgets except pursuant to council direction. For instance, in the enterprise funds, you will see a administrative cost or fee. What we calculate are the uses that services provided to the enterprise funds by the general fund, they pay a certain amount of money to the general fund. So that, there is a transfer there. But we do not support the general fund with enterprise funds. If they are not fee-related, then the enterprise funds stand alone. Then, of course, we have the internal service funds. Internal service funds, we have two of them right now. The information systems funds, which is our computer system as well as communications, meaning internal, and the fleet fund. Those two funds specifically provide services only to the city. So all of their costs are, all their expenses are allocated pursuant to use, percentage use to each of the city departments. Last class of funds that we have, although Don will tell you there's a dozen or so more of them, last class of funds that mean anything to us are our special revenue funds. And special revenue funds, the biggest ones that we have are the Parks and Rec Fund, which is heavily supported with a subsidy from the general fund, as is the street fund, to somewhat lesser of an extent, and the arts fund. They're designated special revenue funds because they receive special revenues, if you will, that support them. For instance, the fees that are charged for parks and recreation programs. There are, in the, the streets fund, they receipt the road and bridge tax there. They also charge, or they're, receive about $120,000, maybe a little more this year. I need to look, from the general fund as well. I'll have to ask Heather what that noise is, because I don't think I'm doing that.
It's only happened while you're up there.
Some people have magnetic personalities, councilors. I don't know what else to say. Okay, first is our disclaimer. With that basic background, our disclaimer is that we use a lot of numbers in the budget, obviously. And one of our jobs is to prognosticate, estimate what future taxes are going to be, what future fees are going to be. The only way we can do that is to look in the past and judge the future. The state makes it a little easier. They send us what they believe their estimates to be on sales tax, liquor tax, those sorts of things. They're right some of the time, some of the time they aren't right. For building permits, for instance, new construction, that's something that we estimate by utilizing community developments figures on, on building permits issued. But then Don has to check with the assessor, the treasurer, to find out exactly what that number is so he can build it into our L-2, which is what the mayor signs, which is our tax authorization for the upcoming year. We also estimate things like fees. When we look at our water and sewer funds, we hope, based upon what our history has been, what we anticipate the uses will be, and we build the budgets based upon that. But it does take a little bit of crystal ball forward-looking, and I'm sure why Lois is here is to make sure that we don't, when you look at these numbers, you know, they're going to be close, but they certainly aren't going to be to the penny with what the treasurer's going to certify at the end of this. They are not official at this point, and they never are. They never have been. Okay, so what tax adjustments are we looking for in FY 2015? The first is, we are authorized under state law to increase our levy 3% over the previous year's levy. That amounts to $1,34,990. The city has historically, I would say probably 60% of the time, has taken the 3% as a matter, of course, inflation being what it is, and costs keep going up. There have been, I would say, and I've not, this is not scientific, but I can certainly do the math, I would say probably about 40% of the time, the council has taken less than the 3%, if not 0%. And that has allowed us to build up what's known as the forgone amount. Under Idaho law, if you do not utilize the 3% tax increase in a year, you are allowed to bank that or forego that. Those are counted as taxes authorized but not taken. So they remain in your savings account, if you will, to utilize access at any time later on that you may need them. And it's up to the council to decide when you may need them. And we'll get to, this is an extraordinary year in the City of Moscow, and we'll talk about that in a few moments. There was talk in the legislature about five years ago, I believe, whether or not that forgone amount should be, if you don't use it within a period of time, does it go away? Legislature debated it, essentially left the law the way Legislature debated it, essentially left the law the way it was. The theory being at the time that you would be almost forcing local government to take the full 3% every year, putting that in the bank, and then they could still choose to use it if they wanted to. The better part, or the more discreet part of that, was to allow local government to bank it and then use it as they saw fit. So, that's the situation that we have here today. This year, we asked the council to consider whether they wanted to utilize part of the forgone amount, which is forgone property taxes, for two other purposes. The first is, the cops positions, this was, these were positions that were authorized in 2011. They were taken in 2012. It authorized us to accept a grant from the federal government, which paid for two police positions that we were unable to fill because of budgetary issues. At that time, the council was advised, and in subsequent budget years, was advised that we were going to have to, at some point, fund those positions. So, that was this year. We came forward. It was extraordinary, so we requested that the council consider utilizing forgone amount for that. That amounts to 3.43 of the, of the percentage from the previous year, or $154,365. Gary? Yes, sir.
If I may, Mayor, I believe we committed to at least one year of funding of those positions after the grant funds ran out?
Yeah, if I may. The grants typically, and it's been this way since they had the burn grants back in the 90s, was that they, and the way those grants worked is they paid the full amount the first year, two-thirds the second year, one-third the third year, and the agreement was that you would continue to fund those positions. They weren't intended just to get you stocked up, and then you pull the funding out later and you go back down to a need position. This grant, like most of them, strongly encourage you to hold those positions for a longer time, but at least the period of a year. And during that time, if you get rid of them previous to that, and there's no, there's no penalty other than you will not be able to reapply for grants in the future. So, they don't come and ask for the money back, but they do strongly discourage it because it puts you at a disadvantage should you ever come forth with another grant.
Bill?
Dan?
So, is, is this tied to that specific person that was hired under this? Or, just the fact, okay, for numbers sake, we have 20, this gave us money for 22, so we have to have 22 positions for at least that extra year?
We have never tied a name to a position. We have a patrol position, I believe, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe one was a patrol position and one may have been the school resource officer. Positions were fully funded by this grant. I believe that's where they, how they were funded.
And along this line of questions, we still are maintaining a level of need for the, that number of police officers within our force?
Actually, yes, we have.
There's been no, no evidence of any reduction of.
We have not, we have not constricted or contracted the police department. However, as you know, we're embarking on a strategic planning initiative, and we'll look at all departments to determine if we're right-sized. But, yeah, we have not expanded or contracted the police department, the numbers in.
Wayne, you have a comment?
Gary, I think it's worthwhile to note, too, that even with these two positions, that the police, the start, police department is still staffed one less than what they were in 2008, prior to the acceptance of this grant and bringing these two officers back on. So, we're still not at the full complement.
Well, yes, you're exactly right. And that position was actually when we combined the position of assistant chief and chief. That was, it was not intended that the assistant chief's position would be filled after Chief Duke moved up. But that, of course, the, the, every time a position is lost, attrition, somebody retires, someone leaves, we always look at it and determine, okay, how are we doing? Does the budget, are we, can we refill this? Is the need still there to have it? So, we look at it as it comes up, but we don't have, we are not running a deficit per se at this time, but Wayne's exactly right. We have one less complement than we did in 2008. Okay, the next forgone amount that we're asking authorization for is the airport runway realignment. This is, this is a fairly late-to-the-game request. The runway realignment project has been on everybody's radar, so to speak, over the past couple of years, thinking that it was going to be about $66 million to do it, which is, sounds like a lot of money. The estimate now is 89 million, and that's all based on FAA changes, engineering estimates, those sorts of things. What, the part that was not really made clear, I think, to local government was, what are we going to have to pay in order to access these federal grants? And you've all heard the stories about the FAA changed the grant from 6% match several years ago to a 10% match across the nation. Unless you are a state that has a elevated percentage, if you will, of federal land and tribal land, thereby not generating taxes, you could go down to 6, no, 6.125 was the difference in the two match calculations. Because this is an Idaho airport located in Washington, the mayor of the city of Pullman, mayor of the city of Moscow, and staff, along with their councils in support, lobbied the federal congressional delegations from Washington and Idaho to come up with a better opportunity than the full 10% that Washington has held to. What they have settled on, at least in theory at this point, is 8.125% for a match, which saves about, well, saves 1.85%. If it's a $10 million match, it saves you $1.875 million. So, that's a step in the right direction. However, that match needs to come from somewhere. Right now, the, the new operational agreement that this council authorized a little over a month ago.
Gary, if I, if I may interrupt you before you go into that, the 8.125 from Congress has cleared one house of the Congress and has not gone through the other.
Has not gone through the senate yet.
Okay, through the senate, so it's not, it's not a done deal.
Yeah, it's our understanding that it has support, but because of the machinations, the one-month.
Good word.
Yeah, so, we tend to, we hope, we hope that, that good triumphs over evil, and we will get it, but.
Well, one thing's for certain, if it's not 8.125, it'll be 10. That's the difference. Go ahead, Gary, continue, please.
Okay, so, one of the things the FAA also, FAA, not FFA, required.
That's still important in Idaho.
You've got me flustered now. The FAA required was a little more, since it was the city of Moscow and the city of Pullman who were the major sponsors on the grant, that, and have been forever, this hasn't changed any. They wanted that agreement revised, and one of the things they wanted revised was the appointment of those airport board members by the mayors of those two cities. So, that was changed. In addition, it became clear that some portion of this, hopefully 8.125%, would come down to the city of Moscow to support and the city of Pullman to support. Mayor Lambert came to the staff, the finance director, and myself, and we started working numbers and determined that we could, and we presented this to council a couple of weeks ago, we focused on $2.5 million as city of Moscow's share of that match, assuming that that same amount would be authorized by the city of Pullman, and hopefully like amounts or substantial amounts, significant amounts pledged by Washington State University, University of Idaho, and hopefully some assistance from the private sector as well as Leittau County and, and the Port District of Whitman. So, with that, the $2.5 million, as we explained at a previous meeting, at a workshop last week, would consist of about $228,000 per year. That would be utilized in conjunction with inter-fund borrowing. So, we would use the $228,000 first, and then if we needed to, depending, and these grants will come to you in sequence. So, it won't be like you will get one grant for $89 million. You will get a grant for the engineering and design. You'll get a grant for perhaps the dirt work. You'll get a grant for paving. How the FAA sets those grants up, I'm not privy to, but they do come to you in series. So, you will have a chance every time to approve those or not approve those. It is when the grants are signed that your obligations for match then become an obligation. So, the amount of money that you need to come up with for match could vary per grant and per year. And the project is estimated to be a five-to-six-year construction project, so there is a certain amount of contingency that they will also build into that $89 million number. The way that it was presented to us essentially was, what can we afford? And that $2.5 million was just about what we could do with the scenario that we have here. So, the $228,000 that is generated would first go to the grant. If there is additional funds that are the city of Moscow's responsibility in that grant, we would activate an inter-fund borrowing for that balance, and that inter-fund, if it was borrowed, say, from the payroll service fund, that would be paid back to them over a period of time with a 2.5% interest generation, which is a lot better than you get out of the local government investment pool, which I think is hovering around .03 right now. So, at any rate, it's an investment for that capital program. At any rate, if we utilize that entirely and borrowed everything up to 2.5 million that wasn't generated with that 228 in the first five years, after 10 years, that $2.5 million would be paid back, and our obligation would cease. So, that's where the 4.82 comes up with. As you saw in the paper, and it was, it was an accurate quote, it's a little bit misleading, it is an increase of city of Moscow's levy of 11.25% if you add all of those together. However, city of Moscow's levy is 24% of every tax dollar generated within the city of Moscow, and I've got some scenarios that we will go through here. So, if this is approved by the city council tonight, taxpayers in the city of Moscow, as a result of your actions, their taxes will not go up, and if they're paying $100 gross tax bill, for instance, it's not going to go up $11.25. It will go up 24% of that. So, the tax bite is not $11.25 per hundred, it's, or thousand, excuse me. So, it's much less than that, it's 24%. So.
Gary, could you, you had some breakdowns, you said you had some breakdowns on it, because what the public needs to know, and everybody's, of course, interested in this, if you have your house, whatever your house is, what exactly is it going to cost you, very, relatively close, if it's, and so the people, and this is how people break it down. Some of the times, we get wrapped up in these terms, and we can, when you talk about numbers, and I'm a numbers guy, but if you're not following numbers, it can almost put you to sleep or lead you into hypnotism. And so, let's break this down a little bit, Gary, kind of black and white for folks at home that can see this as well as our audience.
Well, we received a few emails asking us to do that, and the direction from the mayor this morning was to make it more digestible. Here it is. The 3% represents .22% of the total property tax collected in the city of Moscow. The cops positions is .32%. Runway realignment, .63%. The total percent tax increase is 1.17% of the total city tax burden. Okay, that's just what the magnitude of it will be. Okay.
Hold on, John, we're going to let him run through this whole thing, and then you've got plenty of time to ask questions.
Okay. One of the things that I think people tend to focus on is, when they see this 11.25%, they think, wow, our taxes are going up, 11.25%. As you can see from this diagram in front of you, that the city of Moscow takes 23.4% of every tax dollar generated in the city for operations. We do have a 3% bond that will go away in a couple of years. That is for the Hamilton, excuse me, the Hamilton Low Aquatic Center. So, that will disappear after that time unless it is voted on, again, by, a new project is voted on by the people. Leittau County, 22.3%, just a little bit below what the city of Moscow takes for operations. We have the three smaller taxing districts, and then, of course, Moscow School District, that's $7.74 per thousand, 40.8% of every tax dollar generated in the city of Moscow goes to the Moscow School District. And Moscow School District does not sell services like the city can, like the county can. They receive funding from the state, a little bit of funding from the feds, and most of their money is generated by local property taxes. And there are, there was a levy that was just voted on a couple of years ago for 10.7 million last year? 10.8? Okay, thank you. So, that's part of that 40.8%. Yes?
I just wanted to confirm, these are, this is 2013's actual numbers.
Yes.
So, we don't have 14 numbers?
No, we'll have some estimates, but, yeah, we can't, we can't give you the exact until after the, or the year's closed. Okay, so, the tax implications, if you look at these, this is what the mayor was talking about. If you look down below, total tax bill per thousand, we've estimated on $100,000 home, $150,000 home, $200,000, $250,000, and $300,000. So, if you look at the actual in 2013, you can see on the $200,000 home is what we've always used. It's $2,203 within the city of Moscow. That does not all come to the city of Moscow. Does it, Don? You've been holding out on me? Just kidding. Okay, so that's, that's your growth. There are some implications of the personal property tax realignment that were shifting of personal property taxes to residential taxes, property taxes, and then there will be some replacement monies from the state. So, that's the difference between FY 14 and 15.
John, you've got a question, you're just dying to ask something, so I'm going to go ahead and let you know.
Gary, what you're saying for a guy that got out of school a long time ago is that the amount of your property taxes that Lois is responsible for can go up this amount just for the city of Moscow. It can go up more if the school district passes another bond levy. It can go up more if the cemetery district passes a bond levy. So, the amount that we're talking about here on a $100,000 home, from 304 to 360, back to 306, estimated in 2015, that would be just the city of Moscow's participation. Is that right?
Don, would you answer that?
This slide is int-
Am I on?
Yeah. This slide is intended to show the tax bill for those districts that you see right there. So, the total tax bill is 1,899, and on a $100,000 home, because of the, and you have to remind, there's a big difference between a $100,000 home and a $150,000 home, and the reason for that is because of the homeowner's exemption. Last year's $81,000, this year's $83,000 and change, I forgot, $83,920. So, that's the reason for the lower amount on a $100,000 home. That is the entire bill for all of those different jurisdictions, okay? Because they're only paying taxes if you take the exemption on $100,000, then the difference is only $16,000 in taxes. So, as you move up, we don't have any $100,000 homes that I'm aware of, so that's why we, but, so may I ask the question, what would it be? So, I rolled down the curve from 100 to 150 to 200 to 250 to $300,000, that's the entire bill. So, to answer your question, it's not just the city. We've been showing just the city on the earlier slides. The intent was, what is the percentage share of the city versus the entire bill? And, and people want to know what the entire bill is, so this, this is what this particular slide shows.
Thank you.
Continue, Gary, please.
Okay. Tax burden per household. This is just a variation of the previous slide, but it talks about or illustrates the airport realignment, the police positions, and the total levy increase. So on a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, you're talking about twenty-five dollars and seventy-one cents per year. The two-fifty, three-hundred. That was, I think, Mayor, the specific information you wanted this morning?
That was the information I wanted because of the comments that I've heard from the public and folks who just wanted to know in dollars and cents what it was going to cost to support an airport. And that's why I wanted to have this brought in front of everybody, so they could see it and get a chance, the folks at home as well as our audience, so they know exactly what the cost on this thing would be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's let him continue, John. You've got more. You're going to have plenty of time. We can ask questions till midnight. I don't care. Let's let Gary finish his presentation, then council will get a chance to talk about whatever they want, and then we'll open for a public hearing.
Okay. So then we start talking about, again, since the city of Moscow is only in control of what the city of Moscow can do, on a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, our portion of the property tax bill is five-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents, whereas the total property tax bill is twenty-two-hundred-and-seven dollars and forty-three cents. And again, just shows in comparison that you raise the city's portion by eleven-point-two-five percent, it doesn't mean eleven-point-two-five on the entire tax bill. That was, that was the only portion of the, of the article that I wanted to make sure we explained. Not that it was inaccurate in any way, it just, it didn't go far enough to explain what our portion was. Okay. This is just a comparison of 2015 taxes and their progression through, from 2009, where things have gone. It's, actually, the scale is not that great. If you look at the school district bond, which is that, in the last two slides, the kind of, oh, I don't know, brown colored, it just shows that there was a new tax that was introduced at that time. Okay, this is something that we show you every year, and that is, where are most cities in, in the scheme of things across the state? In 2013, the average city levy was seven dollars and fifty-five cents per thousand. Our 2013 levy was four dollars and forty-four cents. So two dollars and eleven cents less than the average across the state. If the council approves the budgetary proposal tonight, that will go to four-seventy-one, still significant, and that will be 2015 numbers, still significantly less than the 2013 city average. Now, that is not to say that we ought to be up at seven-point-five-five cents per thousand, but it does help to illustrate that other cities, in funding the infrastructure, funding the programs, funding their streets, funding a lot of the things that they do, have this amount of levy to work with, and it generates funds to do that. City of Moscow, we've always done more with less, and we continue to do so. In this case, what we're asking is, we need that additional funding if you want to pursue the programs you want, the police grant and the airport. Okay? Percent of the total levy, again, you can see that the city of Moscow's levy is significantly less than Lewiston and Coeur d'Alene, our two closest Idaho neighbors. These are city, county, and school district comparisons. As you can see, in Lewiston and Coeur d'Alene, the amount of the city levy far exceeds that of the school district levy. Now, lest it be determined, or surmised, surmised that I am causing problems for the school district, I don't mean to. As I explained during our budget workshop, the city of Moscow has approximately two-point-two billion dollars of value, of which one-point-two billion dollars is exempt property, not subject to property taxes. So the entities that are heavily dependent on property taxes are naturally going to have to have higher levies just to meet the minimum of their funding requirements. The county and the school district are clearly a couple of entities that are, well, of course, the smaller taxing districts as well, are dependent almost solely on property taxes. Certainly, the school district is for any of their capital. So just a comparison, but it just goes to show how Moscow is different from these other places. Moscow Pullman Airport, getting close to the end of the presentation. Total project, eighty-nine million. Our participation, as I indicated, two-point-five. We explained the funding at our workshop, and I just explained it again, ten-year term and two-point-two-five percent interest. I think I said two-and-a-half. Sorry for misstating that, Don. But this budget will allow us to pursue that funding mechanism and uphold our part of the airport. So with that, staff is ready to answer any questions.
Walter, I'll yield to you first, because you've been very patient. You have your hand up first.
If I can remember what my notes are about. Thank you. Gary, you had on the airport, planning for two-and-a-half million from the city of Moscow.
Yes.
And you mentioned, first, that there's an attempt to get a lower interest rate for the match from the federal government.
Yes.
It's not a done deal yet. You also mentioned an interest and effort in getting funding from other entities.
Yes.
Are we the only entity, if we pass this tonight, to buy into this program at this time?
I think we are. Now, remember, city of Pullman, they could commit, I know they've had discussions, I haven't read that they've committed to it yet. Their budget cycle is January one to December thirty-first. So until they get their budget done, I don't know that they could do that. We've heard positive comments from WSU and the University of Idaho, and I certainly invite Mayor Lambert to talk about that.
One of the things, the FAA requirement is, they have, we have two entities that are sponsors, and that's the city of Pullman, and that's the city of Moscow. The FAA does not take on an elaborate scheme of a bunch of different sponsors. That's why it's limited to two cities, Moscow and Pullman. We do know that we've got help from both Washington State University, the University of Idaho coming, as well as some private donors that's going to be a part of this. So that's where we're at with this, and that's an FAA requirement, because what they want to do is they want to talk to two entities, two sponsors. They don't want to have to talk to a group of six, because it's much easier. And quite frankly, they're amazed at how well that the two sponsors, the city of Pullman and the city of Moscow, are working together in collaboration to try to make this thing work for us as our, as a region. And that as a region, folks, is very, very important to us. So I hope that answers some of those questions, Gary, and, and I can, and one of the reasons I know so much about this, folks, is because I'm the vice chair of the airport board, and so I've got information that I can share with anybody if they would like to ask questions.
But I think in answer to Councilman Steed's question, I've not seen letters of commitment at this point. And the city, by allowing, remember, we will be, you're authorizing the levy of these funds, you are not authorizing the disbursement of these funds. The budget appropriates them, but it is up to you to release them.
Okay. And if I may-
Sure, go ahead.
So the current estimate, I think you said, was eighty-nine million?
Yes, sir.
I've read somewhere that, at some point, a contingency was added on that pushed it to-
One-nineteen.
One-nineteen. If you've got a rounding purposes, a million here, a million there, you know, a hundred-and-twenty million-dollar project with the contingency, and two entities on the hook for it, Moscow and Pullman, and if you end up at a ten percent match rate, the city of Moscow could be on the hook for six million, six million dollars.
Mathematically, I think that's correct.
On one of your slides, if I may?
Good.
On one of your slides, Gary, you showed a city total tax burden of forty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents on a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home. Yes, that one?
That one?
No, one, the, that one.
Okay.
The forty-seven eighty-seven estimated tax burden?
Yes, sir.
Increase.
Increase.
Now, back up one slide.
Do you want to look at this one?
No.
Oh.
You're going, you write the first time.
Okay.
The forty-seven eighty-seven, and then on the bottom line, the tax implication is shown as going down from forty-one fifty-four to forty-one oh-nine, because of the school district.
Don can talk about that. It has to do with the personal property tax application.
There's two factors that weigh into that. One is the personal property tax exemption went from, from eighty-one thousand to eighty-three nine-oh-eight. That's a big piece of it. Homeowner's exemption. Thank you. What did I say? Oh, it didn't matter. Anyway, and the other is the personal property tax. That is in, that's something the legislature had approved, and that is deducted from the levy amount for this year, and in previous L2s that we submit was included. So that's a deduction from the levy rate. So that also has an impact, which is why that rate goes down. Now, the other slide that you saw that goes up is related to just the fact that you're trying to compare apples to apples in the same year. In other words, 2015 to 2015, what is the rate differences for the three things that were asked? The three things were the three percent tax rate increase, the forgone amount for the two police officers, replacement funding, and the airport funding. That's what that's trying to show.
So, if I may, if you go up to the first line, the city of Moscow, actual 2013 of four-forty-four, going to an estimated 2015 of four-seventy-one, that's only twenty-seven cents. Correct?
I'm sorry, which, which-
The very top one, Don.
Top line, four dollars and forty-four cents in thirteen, estimated 2015 in fifteen, four dollars and seventy-one cents.
Correct.
Okay. So that's, that's just twenty-seven cents. You know, that's not even a cup of coffee. If you go to the next slide, again, you know, you're, you'll never convince me that raising taxes doesn't cost people money. I mean, I hear this all, you know, it's only five bucks, it's only three bucks, it's only twenty-seven cents. It adds up before it's all over.
Well, make no mistake, it's going to cost money to do it. It's not going to be a negative factor, it's going to be a positive in terms that, yeah, we're going to pay more for it. Just, that's just the way it works out. That's one of the reasons we're bringing these slides up, and I asked staff to do this, so that not only our council could see the numbers on this, but our public could see the numbers on it. So it's just, I like things black and white, and I'm a numbers guy, so.
Could you drop back one slide, please, Gary? The Latah County, if you look at estimated 2014, is going up, you know, three cents, and they have approximately the same twenty-five percent of total tax burden that we do, correct?
Twenty-three point four.
And we have-
Twenty-two.
Twenty-four point-
So we have slightly more than they do, not much.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Yeah. So they're going up three cents while we're going up, the difference between four-twenty-five and four-seventy-one. I'm really proud of the county in that they, I understand, are going up one percent instead of the three percent they're allowed, having gone up the three percent for around twenty-odd years and never having held back. So, you know, I'm, I'm appreciative of what, what the county's doing, but I'll, I'll let it go with that. Thank you.
If I may, with all due respect to the county, precisely, but I think you also need to give credence to the city that has foregone the three percent many years in that same twenty-year period. And that's not, that is not making any value judgment. The county is doing the best they can, as we're doing the best we can. I think we just need to recognize that we have also been very conservative with the public's dollar.
Wayne?
Along those lines, first, Walter, you made the comment that, on this airport matching money, that we could be on the hook for six million dollars. Sorry, but I don't see that. If, if we, if it came to that point, that means the deal fell through, and that means we're not on the hook for anything. We have to approve the expenditure of the funds. That isn't going to happen. Now, that's my response to that. Now, in just a comment reflection to what you just said, Gary, about how frugal the city has been over the years, I went up to my friend Lois's office today, and I had her actually pull my personal tax bill on my home residence from 2008 to 2013. In 2008, my total tax bill was twenty-two-hundred dollars. 2013, it was almost twenty-eight-hundred dollars. The city's share in 2008 was five-hundred-ninety dollars and thirty-two cents. In 2013, it was six-hundred-thirty-five dollars and forty-two cents. That's a forty-five-dollar increase in six years. I think that's pretty frugal. Now, it looks like, well, exclusive of the airport, dropped the airport part of it, and we talk about the three percent, and then we talk about forgone money for our police officers. Had we been taking those three percent over the last five years, every year, like we could have, we wouldn't be in the position that we are now. So now we are playing a little bit of catch-up. That's the way I see it.
John, you had a question.
You know, I'm going to go back to the taxes, and actually, the-
Previous slide.
Amount of, now, just, the amount that we're all going to have to write a check for. We've got twenty-two oh-seven, twelve fifty-six, nineteen oh-two. I think we should probably keep in mind that those figures may go up a few cents or down a few cents, so the actual amount that you have to write the check for could easily be somewhat different than this, although not a tremendous amount. Would that be correct, Lois?
Well, one of the things on that, John, one of the reasons we did this presentation was so that people could say, and it is not exact. You're absolutely right. But the catch is, it gives you an idea of where you will be in placement, and that's what this whole example is set for.
Your honor, if I may, before the council continues with its debate, we do have a public hearing by law that we need to open, so I would request that the mayor open that public hearing, and I have two communications that were given to me by the city clerk.
Okay, well, I will open officially, open this public hearing as of now. Gary, would you read those in the record, sir?
Okay, the first letter was sent by Delane Flomer, city council members. "I'm trying to understand how the city can justify an eleven percent property tax increase and not look at cost-cutting measures first. As an employee at the University of Idaho, has been through several holdbacks and budget reductions, I have had to endure four years without a raise. When I finally do get a small raise, our school district manages to take every penny and then some. Now you plan on digging deeper into a paycheck that already does not stretch far enough. I find it pretty hard to stomach that our city employees are scheduled to receive a COLA and an average three-point-five percent increase to get their salaries moved closer to market. Great, my salary is well below market, and we are pretty much told that market will never happen. Driving city employee wages toward market is not a necessity per year first cost-cutting measure. I've read through your budget summary for 2015, and it suggests that Moscow is being reasonable because our average city tax leverage is less than that of surrounding cities. It seems to play down the fact that Moscow is the highest taxed city in comparison to surrounding cities when you factor in all of our taxes. There must be something the city can give up, as I certainly, I, as I certainly know I am within my own family budget. It really seems our local economy is not doing that well. We can't even support a car dealership. I elected each of you because I thought that maybe as a group, you would have a better pulse on how our local economy is doing, and start making our city departments look deep and see where costs could be cut. This council group seems to be business as usual when compared to the old council. I'm asking each of you to rethink this and find a way to reduce the proposed tax increase that is being requested. I'm tired of going backwards." Secondly, from Linda Paul, "Dear friends, please ask Stephanie to read the following short message into the record on Monday night's budget hearing. I regret I cannot attend in person to make those comments to the city council on the topic of the 2015 proposed city budget. I'm aware the council has proposed its revenue proposal for fiscal year 2015 to help find a proposed, fund a proposed public restroom in Friendship Square by assessing each farmer's market vendor, five dollars each Saturday for this purpose. First consideration, the funding of this idea is premature because of the design discussion citing and compliance of the proposal with the overall community design of downtown has not been available for public discussion and comment. While the idea of a public restroom is good when its design and location pose a number of important issues for downtown generally, and the weekly Moscow's farmer's market in particular, none of this has received a wide comprehensive discussion. For example, the current sighting of waste receptacles adjacent to the fountain on the east side of Friendship Square is inappropriate and frankly an eyesore. Secondly, the funding ignores the fact that many others throughout the week would be users of a public restroom beyond the customers in the market. Third, the farmer's market is a public market, one that is similar to other public facilities and recreation like parks, the swimming pool, et cetera. We certainly do not tack on a one-dollar fee for swimmers or people who use the park." Finally, this project- Finally, this project needs more comprehensive public involvement at all levels, including design, public discussion, consideration of funding, and other issues that citizens have given the prominence of its sighting in the very heart of Moscow. Please delete the restroom proposal from this year's funding plans and give the public the opportunity to have a broad discretion of the project before final decisions are made." Those are the two communications that we've received.
Okay, thank you. Usually on a public hearing, I do the ones for and then general comments and opposed. And with this being the budget, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna open it up as we go along here for anybody who wants to make public comment. What I would ask is if you come to the podium, please state your name and your address, and we will give you three minutes, and please stay within that. So, anybody is welcome to come forward.
Victoria Seaver, one twenty-one, North Lily, Moscow. "Thank you, Mr. Redner, for your thorough budget presentations on July fourteenth and August fourth. I especially appreciated the second one regarding city salary increases. Step grades, COLAs, performance evaluations, factor job positions, and so forth were very relatable to me with my thirty-year work background. Thank you, council members, for carefully considering the budget. I also appreciate all the work that city personnel go through to formulate the budget. I am speaking tonight specifically in support of salary increases for city employees. I expect you will approve salary increases as presented, but as you have stated, you wish taxpayers to speak up, so here's my point of view. Yes, sometimes the knee-jerk reaction is, I'm not getting any kind of salary increase, why should they? Or more fairly, how am I supposed to pay for it? I usually work past that as long as we aren't all in severe dire straits. We will not recover the economy and move forward by pulling each other down. These are not bonuses, they are only given for a job done well because the city challenges its people to do better and not just barely do the job. And they are designed into the salary structure in order to bring employees up to market value and as fair compensation for work performance. In essence, they are money's owed. Salary increases won't break the budget. My personal experience with city personnel is that they convey their services to us with commitment and proficiency. Failure to retain good employees due to lagging salaries generates additional costs by overburdening remaining personnel with double duty or services not being rendered and a lot of man-hours and funds being directed toward recruitment and training that could have gone towards services. As pointed out, if the public supported other issues such as school bonds, where residents have voted to increase their taxes for what they believe is good value, then that would indicate that we will pay for something when it matters to us. I appreciate having working sewer systems and wonderful parks and all kinds of city services and amenities. I think we have a fine city, and that is largely due to its personnel. They have put their trust in a system that should bring their salaries up to snuff as quickly as it is able to. I will recommend that the council always remain vigilant with our dollars. I don't automatically vote for a bond just because it's for the schools or anything else, but I believe that solid investment in value and good people is the direction to go. Don't tax me into bankruptcy, I don't, if I don't have a house, you don't get taxes. I've never forgotten a news interview twenty-five, thirty years ago where seniors were losing their homes because they couldn't afford decreasing taxes. Be fair, be wise, be long-range thinking every time you can, and in this budget for city salaries, I say, pay the man and pay the woman. Thank you."
Thank you, Victoria. Come on up. Please state your name and address, sir.
Yes, my name is Mike Bowman. I live at four sixty-three Indian Hills Drive. Mr. Mayor and Councilman, I'm concerned about eleven percent increase, and I want to make it clear that I support the police department. I feel that they're doing a fabulous job. I have questions about the airport when we've got a very adequate all-weather airport thirty miles away, particularly putting that much money in this economy into our airport. The other thing that I am concerned about is, has a sales tax been considered? I've been willing to pay my share of the increase and, well, improving our city. I'm very much in favor of that, but I'd like to have the transits that come through here share it also. And so I, I hope that I misunderstood the eleven percent increase, and I will certainly get a copy of the tax budget and be better informed on that end. But I am against that. It's gonna hurt, I'm on a fixed income, and I'm a retiree. I thank you for your service, I thank you for listening to us, and, well, we'll see where we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. As we move through the night, folks, too, we'll comment on some of these questions and concerns and hopefully have some of those answers, and we'll continue on. We're gonna continue on, Wayne, for others to come up and talk, because we'll have time to discuss all this.
My name is Josh Wilson, two-five-zero-six, Castleford. When I saw in the paper that there was possible increase, I've lived here for four years, and I've gotten a million things in my head today what I was gonna say here, and I ask you guys to look at it. You're business leaders and leaders in the community, and as your business unit runs, you're asking for an eleven-and-a-half percent increase for your business unit of the city. If you can drag in residents and businesses that are growing their business at eleven-and-a-half percent, I think you'd get a lot of support for this, but I find it hard in this environment and this community that eleven-and-a-half percent increase is necessary. You should look to the county. You've asked for help, I believe, in the paper, a gentleman asked, we're looking for ideas. Maybe we should look to the county. Love the police, think they do a great job, but maybe we should look at pairing what the police are paid in the city of Moscow versus what they're paid in the county. There is quite a difference there. With the runway, you know, there's an airport in Lewiston, there's an airport in Spokane, I travel two or three times a year, they're just as equivalent, and to spend possibly, as Mr. Sead heads, up to six million dollars to put the city on the hook for when we don't even have fully-paid roads in the city, I believe is a disservice to the residents here versus an airport. With that, thank you for your time, and I hope you guys make the wise decisions, leaders. Thank you.
Others who would like to come up and speak? Going once, going twice, going three times. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and we're gonna answer some of those questions that you folks have, but Gary, before you get started, one of the things I want to make very clear to everybody in the city of Moscow, anybody that's watching this, and whether you're in the room or not, one thing I'll say about the airport realignment that we do know, if we don't do it, we will definitely lose air service in Moscow Pullman. Yes, there's an airport in Lewiston, and yes, there's an airport in Spokane. We also have to look at that as what kind of an impact that will have on our economy as a region and our two universities. And so, the decision that's made tonight is not necessarily an easy decision, and make no mistake out there, folks, these councilors up here, we have talked and hammered this discussion out with city staff and others for a while now, and it's, and there's nothing here that we take lightly. We're very, very serious about these councilors, are well-prepared, and they ask good questions, and we'll move forward. So I want to make certain that the public knows that this isn't something that we take for granted, this council takes for granted, because they worked very, very hard on it. And one of the things, and I'll save you this for the council, they were elected sometimes to make tough decisions, and that's what's in front of us right now, is tough decisions. Gary, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
I wanted to answer a couple of comments. First of all, that our entire property tax receipts to the city of Moscow amount to far less than fifty percent of just the general fund, so when you talk about eleven-point-two-five percent increase, it isn't the expenses of the city going up eleven-point-two-five percent because that isn't our only revenue source. Secondly, the question from Mr. Bowman about sales tax, you all know that answer for the edification of the public. Sales taxes at the local level, local option sales taxes have been discussed for the twenty-two years I've been in this position with the city of Moscow and far beyond that. We cannot get state authorization to do that. We would love to do that. We'd like to tax the folks that come in and use our parks, sleep in our hotels, drive on our streets, and be able to tax the people who actually use the infrastructure. We're not allowed to do that. We will continue to lobby for it, as we have virtually every year that I've been here. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Discussion for council. Wayne, you had your hand up.
Well, Gary mentioned it. It had to do with Mr. Bowman's comment about why can't we just hook it onto the sales tax? That's local option taxing, and we've been talking about, well, I've been doing this for seven years, and that's one of my biggest complaints with our state legislators, they will not give us the ability to do local option taxing. And we could do so much more with local option taxing, we could have less property tax increases, we could put it on the backs of the people that are coming through the community, they're utilizing our services, they're riding our buses, and they're not paying a dime to do it, but if we could get some local option taxing done, that would help. But right now, it's our state legislators don't seem to want to turn loose with that, so, yeah. That's what I was gonna say. John, where did it?
John? I'll go to John, then I'll go to Tom.
Gary, would you bring up just one of the previous, now, that one's good. If, for example, the tax bill were to go up eleven-point-five percent, we would be adding a hundred and thirty dollars to the tax bill. Is that correct?
A hundred and thirty dollars to the three-hundred-thousand dollar...
We saved a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar home. If taxes were going to go up eleven percent...
Go up about fourteen, yeah, eleven-point-five, go about thirty-five dollars. Don, is my calculation correct?
He's talking about the total one.
I'm talking total, the amount the customer or the citizen has to write their property tax check. The amount would go up instead of going up...
Go to the go-up page.
Yeah.
That guy?
That guy.
Yeah. If we're talking, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that the amount that the citizen is gonna have to write their check for is not going to be eleven-and-a-half percent greater in two thousand and fifteen than it is in two thousand and fourteen. It will be roughly about, at the most, three percent.
Precisely.
Okay.
Tom, you have a...
I wanted to look at the slide again where you're saying the...
Just tell me which one you want.
Earlier, the eleven, you had the eleven-point-two-five, but the city impact of that...
Broke it down.
Or you broke it down before that one, one before that one, that one. Is that the one? Yeah, that's the one. So, the total, our impact on the property tax increase is one-point-one-seven percent, not eleven-point-two-five percent.
I can trust the calculations by the finance director, that's correct.
So this is what I was trying to get to.
Don, is that accurate?
Exactly.
Okay. That's why he's got plaques on the wall.
He's got plaques up there. The other question I had was the city pool levy, when does that expire?
Two thousand eighteen, I believe.
Eighteen, okay. So...
And if the city does not choose to incur any more general obligation debt, we will have no general obligation debt at that point.
And that's the three, so could you go on to the next slide from this? So that's the city of Moscow bond, the three percent?
Yes.
That's the pool right there. So that goes away in two years?
Exactly.
Two, three years?
Three years.
Three years. Okay, those were my two questions.
Arthur, we haven't heard from you down at Ted, and nobody gets unscathed tonight, Art.
I'm thinking more philosophically about the whole thing, and especially Victoria's comment about taxes are not a fun thing, but they are necessary and they are beneficial if they're spent wisely and appropriately on various projects. And I think it's also incumbent on this body and the city in general not to look just at the immediate horizon of funding and taxing, we have to look into the future, twenty, twenty-five years, and what would an airport realignment mean for the community twenty-five years from now versus not having one? And to me, it's very much akin to the interstate highways and things. They were expensive in the beginning, but the amount of return that was eventually generated was fantastic. And I think the same thing applies to the airport. Communities without reasonable air service and commercial-scaled airports are going to fade away off the map, and it doesn't behoove the towns or the universities to neglect this opportunity to realign that runway, increase service, increase reliability. Further, the city needs to pay attention to the very basics, the water, the sewer, the fire protection, police, parks, roads, and part of that is providing for police, and to have an understaffed department is not appropriate for the city. We want to maintain what we have here, where news of record is full of minor pilferage and vandalism and not murder and mayhem in general. And part of that is a good police department that keeps the lid on things, and we need to fund that, and those are the two big chunks that we're looking at here of why we're looking to increase taxes, not eleven percent, but one-point-one percent of what you're writing your tax bill for. I'm always cautious as a scientist of thinking anything about percentages because percentages lie like bad rugs, and you can make a percentage tell you anything you want. So I would rather us look at the actual impact on the bottom line rather than quoting percentage increases because that's a path to all manner of peril, so that's what I have to say about those issues at length.
Wayne's got something, then I'll come to you, Walter.
Well, I'm gonna go back and reiterate one area that I talked about. When we first went into the recession, which was actually about two thousand eight, wasn't it? You know, and through attrition is when we lost our police officers. We didn't lay anybody off, but we didn't hire anybody because we did not, at this time, that council, this council said, we're not going to take a three percent increase. We were in a recession, we knew times were tough, and that's why over those last, next, following three or four or five years, we haven't taken the three percent. The county did. I'm thinking maybe the county was a little smarter than we were, because now they're not playing catch-up. Now they look like the good guys, and we look like the bad guys, but it's caught up with us. And, you know, if we had taken the three percent in two thousand eight, we could have hired those two officers, and we wouldn't be doing what we're trying to do now. So I think I really do, I feel like we are playing, I think we are playing catch-up. As far as the airport is concerned, I cannot fathom allowing that airport to lose its FAA certification and losing all passenger and commercial air service. It would turn into a Colfax Airport, an Ag, and a private industry. Now, you say, well, we have the Lewiston Airport, we have the Spokane Airport. You go to Spokane, you probably go up and spend the night, or you leave at three o'clock in the morning, hopefully it's winter time and the roads are not bad, and you pay seven or eight dollars a day for parking. Or you go to Lewiston, and we hope that the weather isn't bad when we go down Lewiston in the wintertime and back. The last numbers that I looked at, Bill, you might be able to confirm this one way or the other, the last numbers I looked at on boardings at the Moscow Pullman Airport, the percentage of increase in boardings was greater than the percentage of increase in boardings at Lewiston.
That's correct.
If you have used our airport, which I have for traveling, when you get there, the terminal almost isn't big enough now to handle all the people that want to get on the planes. It's being used, and if you haven't tried this airport, if you're flying by Alaska Horizon, it'll cost you twenty dollars more for a ticket than it will if you go to Spokane or Lewiston. Twenty dollars. And I can tell you, it was sure a lot nicer flying into Moscow... And I can tell you, it was sure a lot nicer flying into Moscow and getting in at 6:30 at night and just driving 15 minutes to get home. So I cannot fathom not having this airport. And I've said this, and I'm going to go on public record as saying this, is I will not allow myself, part of my legacy of being on this city council, of being part of the council that flushed that airport down the toilet. I won't, I would have a really hard time going for $6 million like Walter's talking about if the other entities didn't step up to do it. We would really have to rethink this really, really hard. And we could, even the $2.5 million, the foregone that we're taking for that, we could back that out if we had to. If push came to shove and nobody else funded it and we were the only ones, and I don't, I don't even believe that that's going to be the case, we could back that out.
I want to make one comment clear. The county is good guys.
Yep.
And ladies. This isn't about a city, this is not a city versus county or a county versus city. I want to make that perfectly clear. For crying out loud, we're all residents in the same fine county that we're in, and most of us in the city. So I just wanted to make that statement. I don't think Wayne wanted to come across that way, but I wanted to make sure.
Well, I said that. I thought they were smarter than we were.
Well, Dick back there is feeling pretty good about that right now, Wayne. But the point is, is there's a lot of things we work together on, and that's the point I'm trying to make, Wayne. Other conversation? Walter, you had something you wanted to...
I'm sorry. Yeah, I want to, I want to thank the Lewiston Daily Effort, or I mean, Morning Tribune, for the headline they ran recently. We had three people come forward and speak at the budget public hearing tonight, which is three more than we have a lot of years. I made a comment recently to a county commissioner that I, you know, and you've heard me complain before that the public doesn't turn out, that they don't come and talk to us to tell us what they think. And he informed me that that's what they elected us for, that we're supposed to be the ones to know how to handle this and shouldn't have to... The inference was that we shouldn't have to continually expect daily input from the public. I'm still trying to get my brain wrapped around that one a little bit. One other email that we got that Gary probably wasn't forwarded, it came to all the council, and if I may read it, from Jim Fazio, said, "Gentlemen, regarding the potential of an 11% property tax increase, the Daily News," it was the Tribune, quoted Walter Steadie as saying, "He is, quote, 'unsure of any other way to fill the budget's gaps,' unquote. I might suggest one, tightening the city's belt. Learn to say no to some of the admittedly good projects that are continuously proposed. Property taxes are smothering the life out of us, especially those of us who own business property in town." The reason, and I was accurately quoted in the newspaper. I've never been one to complain of being inaccurately quoted. Sometimes I have to correct some facts, but the newspapers over the years have been very, very fair with me. But I was not about to, on an evening phone call from a reporter, start enumerating ways the city of Moscow could save money. I didn't want to start that discussion in a morning newspaper within the same week that this council was going to have this budget workshop. I do feel that the city of Moscow spends money that it doesn't have to. It doesn't add up to millions of dollars. But when we spend recently $16,656 for seven solar-powered garbage cans, I'm questioning like, what? And I've yet to find out that any type of return on investment analysis was done before that purchase. We've even had somebody complain to us about the looks of them, not the cost. I saw a TV show talking about that particular garbage can, and I thought, that's a really cool idea. It was from Philadelphia. It talked about how much money they were going to save by not having to pick them up, except when the garbage can called somebody and said, "I'm full, come get me," as opposed to servicing them daily, weekly, or whatever it was. I thought it was a great idea. Personally, as a businessperson, I would have looked in, how much can we save before I spent the money? My point is that the city spends money sometimes because apparently we have it. I've been the 5-1 vote on budget, I think, for six of the seven years that I've had these, sat up here for these budget hearings. I guess I'm probably going to go tonight and do it one more time. Thank you, Mayor.
John?
Bill, you probably rode this horse about far enough. I'd make a motion that we accept the FY 2015 City of Moscow annual appropriation in the amount specified and all of the things that it implies, if that makes any sense. Pass the budget.
Your Honor, if I may, have you closed the public hearing yet?
No, we... Yes, I did.
Yeah, thank you.
Public hearing was closed, and we've been in the discussion process. If Don missed it, I'm sorry. Did you get it on there?
Okay, good.
Seth?
Should ask Steph, sorry.
If I can paraphrase the motion then?
What's that?
If I'm allowed to paraphrase the motion, John, did you intend on asking the council to approve the annual appropriation ordinance and under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, read by title, published by summary at this phase?
That's good.
Thank you.
That's what he did.
Stephanie's got a point of order.
That's, that'll be the second motion.
Separate motion.
I'll second John's, if somebody else hadn't already.
Nobody had, Dan, so...
I was going to, but you can...
John Weber made the motion, Dan seconded that motion.
I did too earlier.
And that was for the approval of the FY 2015 City of Moscow's annual appropriation ordinance. Upon consideration and testimony presented, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings and it be read by title and published by summary. Is that what you said, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was what the motion is. And a second by Dan, I'll start with Art.
Aye. Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, note that that vote was 5 to 1 in favor of it, so that ordinance, now I will read it before we move on.
2014-12.
12? I couldn't hear you, Seth.
12.
Number 12.
Okay. This is ordinance number 2014-12, an ordinance entitled Annual Appropriations Ordinance, approximating $59,751,430 for the purpose of defraying all necessary expenses and liability to the city of Moscow, Leito County, State of Idaho, for the 2015 fiscal year beginning the first day of October 2014 and ending the 30th day of September 2015, and allocating resources by fund for said appropriation for the objects and purposes set forth in this ordinance, levying ad valorem taxes in the amount of $5,195,775 for the 2015 fiscal year, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law.
Your Honor, now we need a motion to authorize your execution of the L-2.
Dan?
I'd make a motion that we authorize the mayor execute the L-2 property tax certification in the aggregate amount of $5,195,775.
A second, Ted.
Okay, the motion was made by Dan to authorize the mayor's execution of the L-2 property tax certification in aggregate amount of $5,195,775, and seconded by Tom Lamar. And I will start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Make note that that passed 6 to 0. Is there anything else we have to do with this?
Not with the budget. We're on to the fee resolution now.
Do we want to do the fee resolution, or do we want to take a recess?
Oh, let's take a recess.
10-minute recess. It is 8:39. We will resume at 8:50. It's 8:40 now, so 8:50, we will resume the meeting.
Welcome back, everybody. We will resume the meeting at 8:50 and we are now on item five, which is our public hearing updating the fiscal year 2015 fees in support of the City of Moscow 2015 budget. Gary, would you present, sir, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I feel obligated to say this is a labor of love of the city clerk. While we're all laboring over the budget, Stephanie every week is throwing a revised fee resolution at us, trying to get us to approach it. So this is what you get. We never used to bring the fee resolution at the same meeting as the budget, but in recent years, we've tried to do that because, of course, the budget, the fee resolution, like the tax authorization, supports the budget. So we wanted to go ahead and bring that at the same time. Fee resolution is presented every year. The fees that the city charges for services, water, sewer, garbage fees, parking tickets, you name it, they're on the fee resolution. They are authorized every year by the city council. This year, the fee resolution is being proposed in a public hearing setting, and the public hearing setting is required because if any new fees are proposed or any existing fees are increased by up or more than five percent or greater, then a public hearing is required. And that public hearing has the public hearing for the budget. You have to publish notice for it two times in consecutive weeks prior to the meeting. This was, of course, published Sunday or Saturday a week ago and then last Saturday, as was the budget. That notice must contain a synopsis or a summary of those fees that are being increased or new fees. So we will get right to it. The fee resolution, this is just a synopsis. Cost of services and capital improvements. We have public utilities of water and sewer. And then the cost of service for land use and development. Of course, we have no capital involved in that. Building valuation, you see all of those. I won't read them all off. And then, of course, sanitation, carryout and tipping fees, and some other services, licenses, that sort of thing that are also included. And all the parks and rec programs that you authorized in the budget and our programs are also included as well. Those are all fees affiliated with those programs. Okay, land use and development fees. This is an area that at the workshop the council had some concerns about and wanted to go into a little more in depth, as Bill Bellknap indicated at that time, and he is here ready to answer your questions again. What we look at, Bill, I thought, did a nice job at administrative committee, I believe it was, talking about the purpose is to try and recover the actual costs of these land use permits. For instance, we have some special circumstances in the City of Moscow. State code requires notice to be given to those residents who are located within 300 feet of development. In Moscow, several years ago, the council authorized or mandated that it would now be 600 feet. And, of course, that, as that diameter gets larger, it's exponential. So that involves quite a few mailings, that sort of thing, public notices. So those are actual costs, and what we're trying to do is move toward recovery of those costs. In addition, what Bill reported at, and you can certainly ask him questions if you like, indicated that he looked at some of our surrounding jurisdictions to make sure that we were still within the realm of reason, and it turns out that all of our permit fees are less than those in surrounding jurisdictions.
Gary, Dan's got something.
Oh, yes.
Quick, Bill, while we're on this page, how many of those fees are common right now? I mean, we don't see, I mean, recreational vehicle parks. When was the last time we saw one of those? I mean, you've probably never seen one.
The last RV park development application was actually about a year ago. It was a Renaissance RV park out on Carmichael Road. That was actually an expansion. I think we had a prior approval about three years prior to that. But that was the only one we've had. So we have not had a great number of those. And then the mobile home park development fees, we've not had a new mobile home park established, at least in the last decade that I've been here. You know, we, conditional special use permits, variances, PUDs, lot divisions, site plans, all those are very common subdivisions. You know, we do those on a regular basis. But the mobile home park is kind of the one that we have not done, at least in the last 10 years. And RV park, again, we've had one the last 10 years.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure and point out that we're not putting this on something that happens all the time. These are, this is something that doesn't happen necessarily, but if it did, it would take an amount of work relative to the fee.
Correct. And what we, I mean, we looked at our direct staff time and the publication costs and the hearing notice publication costs have increased over the course of the last several years. For example, on a conditional use permit, we're spending about $160 just in our noticing costs. It's the publication, the mailing to the adjacent property owners. By the time you take staff time into account, we're pretty much collecting about a third of the cost of processing those applications. And so the fees increases that were proposed this year is really kind of a first phase of phasing up over the course of three years, if the council wishes to do so, to raise those fees closer to the actual cost of processing those applications and more comparable to other jurisdictions that are actually charging the true cost of processing of those types of applications. In the broader scheme of things, in the budget, they don't account to a whole lot of money. I think we budgeted about $6,000 annually for these kind of land use discretionary fees. So it's not a large sum of money overall in the budget as a whole. So it's not going to make a significant impact, but it will help us get closer to recapturing the cost of delivering the service.
Thank you.
You just want to be clear. I'm assuming that all mobile home parks within the City of Moscow are on city water and sewer, and that we don't have any situations like exist at Siringa where there's private water sewer systems. Am I making the wrong assumption there?
I believe that with the North Polk Water Project, I believe now that that's the case. It has not been until just in the last two years, I believe. With the North Polk Waterline Project, that did extend.
Sorry, I'm throwing a one. I'm not even as comfortable as Bill is saying.
Actually, this is kind of getting off the.
It's rough, but I'm just, I'm trying to connect it back to the.
We can certainly have the Public Works Department pass that information.
Gary, go ahead and continue your presentation.
Okay, future. Okay, building permit fees, couple of new ones. Plumbing appliance installation fee as well as gas MEC permit issuance fee. And again, these are new fees that are being proposed. I'd ask Bill if he can explain those if there's a question from the council.
Please explain.
What's the plumbing appliance installation?
We actually restructured a few of the, and it's only for a few of the building permit, of the building permit fees. We instituted what we're calling a permit issuance fee. Every time we process a permit, it takes the permit coordinator time to go through the record. We have to pay the cost of the software system that we have to record the application. We have to enter the application, calculate its fee, collect the fee, issue the permit, and then when it's completed, issue the certificate of completion. And then we have a record retention cost for that permit record after it's completed. So we have created what we call a permit issuance fee that's $24 for all, most all permits that we would process, and that helps us cover the cost of just handling the permit. Any additional fees are associated with the time for the inspection on the project. So the plumbing appliance installation is for, for example, if you're going to do a water heater replacement or a new boiler installation for irradiant heating system, that is just, that is what's considered to be a plumbing appliance.
Mr. Mayor?
Walter?
Bill, if I may, in that vein, so we've added a $24 fee on top of the fees we've been charging for plumbing, electrical and gas, as well as increasing, I see one that actually looks like it dropped, the actual fee itself.
It has varied across the board. In some instances, we had a plumbing permit fee that was $32, that has now been reduced to the issuance fee of 24. And then depending upon the nature or the type of permit, some items have actually been decreased in cost because now we are segregating out the kind of permit issuance and handling charge separately, and then the individual tasks, whether it was a plumbing fixture or a gas outlet is being charged separately. So we really are just kind of segregating out that permit issuance fee. And in some instances, that fee was $32 previously as just kind of the plumbing permit fee, and then you would add an additional element depending upon what the scope of work included. We're really just kind of standardizing that all permits have a permit issuance fee of $24 that covers that cost, and then we're looking at what happens beyond that and charging that separately.
So if I may.
Sure.
I'm still trying to understand this, and amazingly, I was just flipping pages here and happened to see that one for the first time as somebody started asking about it. So the 24 is a new on top of?
No, it's not. It is a.
Let's look, let's look, if you would, at plumbing permit fees.
Page one.
Item B, is there a page number? Yeah, page six of 29, top of the page.
Yep.
And I'm just trying to understand the global implications of this. The plumbing residential permit is $17 plus $9 per plumbing fixture.
Correct. And previously, it was $32 plus 8.50 per fixture.
Okay, but they also are going to pay 24 bucks?
That's correct.
Okay, so it is an on top of that we haven't had before.
It was incorporated in the 32 before. So I mean, some portion of that was represented in the $32 fee that was previously charged. We have just segregated out what we, what we believe to be the cost of the paper processing, the records retention, the software for each permit, and that amount has been charged at 24. What happens beyond that, the 17 plus nine per fixture then covers the inspection component, the time for the inspector to go out to inspect the project, both at rough-in, at final, at completion. And so looking at a typical home, the 17 plus $9 per plumbing fixture equates to typically the amount of time that we'd spend on the inspection. So we're really looking at all the aspects and all of our costs and how to recover those costs and making sure we're accounting for them. Rather than bundling it all into an individual permit fee, every, every permit, whether it's a plumbing, mechanical, electrical or building, will have that permit issuance fee. And then we've reduced many of the other fees where that kind of inherent permit handling cost was embedded within it to segregate that out.
Thank you. Bill?
Wayne?
Here again for Bill. Doesn't this strike you that you've just made this more complicated and more complicated than what it's been? Why, can't we simplify this? And if you've got a plumbing, you've got to have a plumbing permit. You've paid the fee for plumbing in your, when you're building a house, and now you're going, and obviously you're going to put a water heater in it, but now there's another $17 on top of that because you're putting a water heater in. The plumbing's going to be inspected anyway, which means the water heater's going to be inspected.
The.
I just have, I don't, it seems way, way over the top to me as far as bureaucratic and complicated.
If I may, in the residential permit, the heater's going to be covered as a plumbing fixture, so it's going to be incorporated in that cost. It's going to be counted as one of the plumbing fixtures. It's not going to be a separate charge. The appliance is if somebody's just doing that change out. So it's an existing home or they're adding a water heater or they're adding a boiler, then you'll have a $24 permit issuance fee and $17 for the inspection fee.
Okay.
So on a new home, that 17 is really for a change out and replacements or new additions.
Okay.
If you're doing a new residential, then that's all going to fall under item number B, and the heater's going to be one of the fixtures.
Okay.
That clarifies it.
Could I, could I have one more question I'd like to ask?
To follow that.
Then I have one more.
Should the fee resolution not say that? This says, I'm with Wayne, it says plumbing appliance installation, water heaters and boilers. It doesn't say replacement.
And we can certainly add a note to that effect.
If that is the case.
Okay, Wayne, you hit.
Let's go back up, go back up a little bit. Page two, item K, accessory structure permit. One-story detached residential accessory building used as tool and storage sheds with a floor area less than 200 square feet and where no building permit is required. It's $28.50. That means if somebody in their backyard wants to build a four-by-eight tool shed to put their lawnmower in, they got to come to the city and pay $28.50 to do that.
That's correct.
And what is the purpose in that?
The purpose is to do a zoning review of the placement of the structure to make sure it's outside the setbacks and a compliance inspection afterwards to ensure that it was placed in the proper location in accordance with the code requirements.
Good answer.
Gary, would you like to continue on?
Yes, sir.
I don't know where you're at in your presentation.
He doesn't know either now.
Yes, he does.
We're rolling along. Okay, these are sewer service rates. We've been through these several times. These are pursuant to the water and sewer rate study, so this just implements a continuation of those fees. You will see that there are some of these that were implemented in a two-year cycle because when we did the use study and the analysis, the load study, that it was determined that that much of a hike in one year would be too much. So we've kind of leveled that out. Same thing we did with water rates a few years back, so on and so forth. Same thing with water permit, same thing. The increases are pursuant to the adopted rate study, so those are included in there as well. We are seeing the street cut damage recovery fee, which is something that has been in our fee resolution for years. We've not charged it, so it is being charged at this point. We did a pretty in-depth review of street cuts. If you have a brand-new street, some cities don't allow you to cut it at all. And we would prefer nobody cut it because once you cut asphalt, it reduces the life of that street exponentially. So there's usually a period of time when you can't cut it at all, and then it costs a lot from there on out. Tyler Palmer and Kevin Lilly came up with this schedule. So if someone comes in, you want to encourage folks to get their underground utilities in before you pave the new street. Isn't always the case. There are situations where somebody's sewer system or sewer hookup tap will fail on their side of the tap, so water meter fails on the side, customer side, so on and so forth, or a public utility wants to hook in. They can do it, but it's going to cost them because the street department, of course, has to come back in and the rest of the city is being charged with what it costs to replace that street. So this is just another fee that is intended to place the cost back on the folks who caused the damage.
Dan's got it. So, but what if the folks that do cause the damage go in and do the repair?
It still reduces the cost of the, or life of the street.
So this.
They still need to do the repairs.
They do the repairs on top of this?
Yes.
Damage fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Walter? On the same topic, did I, did you say we've had a fee for this all along but never have not been charging it?
It was, yeah, it was put in, how many years ago, Don?
When I started, 2002.
Don had to take credit for it. He slipped it in without council authorization. No, it just.
Don knew about it all along but wasn't collecting it. Is that what?
Well, it was actually, the fees were, it was discussed. The fees were, some were getting covered, as Dan just indicated. We had increased costs of repair, so it was felt that that was sufficient. But as we're seeing now, and I think frankly, the street that kind of swung it was a street. When we had that brand-new street out there and people start cutting it for utilities, and you can see a street that's in really good shape starts going downhill real quick once it's cut. So this is the answer from Public Works. You also see a right-of-way excavation security deposit, 5% increase on that to make sure that folks who dig in the right-of-way pay for or are responsible for what they do. Parks and Rec programming was, we all went through the budget process, and that, those programs are determined by the programs that are authorized. Arts Department, you have an arts class classification that is increasing as well, and that is a variable amount depending on the class. That's it. Happy to answer any questions?
I think there is a bunch already asked. Other questions for Gary before I open a public hearing?
Sidewalks, sidewalk damage fee. Do we just say, go fix the sidewalk that you broke with your tractor when you went across it, or do we?
That's, the ordinance requires that it's repaired.
Okay.
So we don't need a fee for that.
So enforcement is just a matter of enforcement?
Yeah, it's a matter of finding it and having them.
Assessing the right person.
Precisely. Thanks.
Thank you, Gary. I will officially open the public hearing for the fee resolution. Anybody can come forward and speak on this, on the audience. Nobody's rushing to the podium. We have no comments for, against, or otherwise, so I will close the public hearing. We have no comments for, against, or otherwise, so I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to Gary and we'll go from there. Walter?
Gary, you made a comment that the fees support the budget that we just passed.
Yes.
I guess, my question is one of timing, why would we do the fees after the budget? Because if we don't vote yes on these fees, the city's got a problem, they've got a budget they keep fun.
No, there's no problem, we...
I'm not suggesting we're gonna do that, but I'm, I'm looking at the cart and the horse a little bit.
Well, remember, it's an appropriation ordinance, it's an appropriation budget, it's a management document. So, just like we've said for Parks and Rec programs for years, they anticipate that they'll have X number of programs and they're gonna charge X amount of dollars for it. It may be that they send out invitations, nobody signs up for the program. So you don't get the fees that you anticipated, but on the other hand, you don't have the expense either. So that's how the budget's managed. Bill's land use fees, there's a certain amount within the budget that he's expecting as revenue. If that revenue doesn't come in, we'll balance the budget. We've got contingencies, there'll be something that isn't spent in another area, but if you don't have that many fees come in, it means you're not doing the work. That's the basis of the fee. So I understand what you're saying, but it is dependent on the use of some...
Approving the fees before the budget would have been...
But if the council, on the other hand, if the council gets rid of a program, we'd have to go back and, and not charge a fee for it. So I mean, it's a, it's a chicken and egg thing. But trust us, if council cuts anything out of this fee resolution, it will also be reduced out of the budget.
One of the... Walter? Don, what, there's a comment that in the packet, or in the item in the agenda, that some things are either new or will be increased by five percent or more. I would question or state that what we see in front of us in red are not within, are not all new and not all over five percent. There's some that are lowered and some that are...
Any change.
So it's all fees is what we're looking at?
All change.
Yes, when we, when we try to provide the fee resolution, it's really a catalog of all fees that the city has so that a user can go to the fee resolution on our website and see, and make a reasonable expectation of what they might pay for, for an event, whether it be Parks and Recreation or a land use issue. So this is a catalog, so to answer your question is yes, there's fees that did not adjust at all, there are fees that went up more than five percent, there's some new fees in here, so it's just a catalog of fees.
Okay, and one other question to Don, what's the value of the increases that are before us, the anticipated, if, if Dwight's programs market as you anticipate, or as people use water as you anticipate, or sewer services?
The, the revenue over for previous year, I did not calculate, I, I'm sorry, I didn't prepare for that.
Okay.
Question, I, I can find that number out and get it to you. Sorry.
Your honor, we would ask the council to approve the resolution?
Art's got a question. I was gonna jump on that.
Okay.
And make a motion that we approve the proposed two thousand and fifteen fee resolution.
I'll second it.
Okay, Art made the motion to approve the two thousand and fifteen fee resolution in support of the two thousand and fifteen budget, seconded by Wayne Kraus. We'll start the roll with John.
I've got a question before.
Oh, alright.
I have got some proposals about raising some of the farmer's market fees in anticipation of building the restroom. And is this the time to bring it up, or am I just so out?
You are, it was swiftly out of luck, yes.
The reason for John's motion's been made and seconded, it's what the deal is, so we're gonna, I mean, it is what it is.
If I, if I can have just a brief explanation, when we advertise for this, as Don indicated, state code requires that if it's a new fee, or it's a fee that's gonna increase by five percent or more, then we have to specifically notice it in a public notice. The fee resolution can be amended at any time throughout the year.
Yes.
So if the council desires to change fees at any time and they, new fees or in, above five percent, all we have to do is, the council directs us, we put notice out, we have a public hearing, and it can be heard at any time.
Question on that, Gary, then that would come before a Public Works and Finance first.
Absolutely.
And then based on what those, that commission did, or what that board did bringing it to the council, then it would go to a public hearing?
Absolutely, and as John's indicating, if it has to do with the, the farmer's market, that season begins, we, they start to line people up in February and March, so that would, you have some time if you desire to have that vetted out. But it's impossible to do it tonight because it wasn't included in our public notice.
If it, if I may, if it, if it were not, which I believe it would be, over five percent, that wouldn't apply.
Precisely, you're exactly right.
If he wanted to add a dam to something, it could be done tonight, it's the, it's the five percent or new.
Precisely. However, my advice to you is, we have a farmer's market commission, if there is a proposal that you wish forwarded, I would recommend to go to the commission, at least get their input, and then the council can deal with it as they wish.
I was gonna say that it's, seems part of a larger issue concerning the downtown restrooms altogether and would necessarily involve more city commissions, and I think should kinda well up from below a little bit with some advisory comments to the council.
So we can spend the next five years and not build the restrooms?
I say with two months.
No, you just give direction to Farmer's Market Commission and other interested entities to come back with a recommendation.
You know, I think what we should do, we got a motion made in a second on it, we're kinda getting out of the way lane on this thing, so I'm gonna start the roll with you, John.
Aye.
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 Okay, a fee resolution passed, six to zero, that is a new resolution. Now we're gonna go on to item five B, as I said earlier in the program, we had a deviation, is there something you need to say?
I was gonna let you know that from the two thousand and fourteen to sixteen?
Two thousand and fourteen dash sixteen, is that correct? Okay, thank you very much. As I mentioned earlier, we made a little alteration amendment to the meeting tonight under good faith that the, we were gonna have a later school date opening happening, and I am gonna let Dwight take over from here.
Go from there.
Okay, well, thank you. Last week when we started hearing the rumors about possibly the school year starting a little bit later, staff started looking at what kind of things we could do to fill in the gaps for the kids during this week to two weeks, or whatever it ended up being. So we were doing that, and I found out just this evening that looks like they're looking at the two-week period, September seventh, I believe.
Ninth.
Ninth, is their start date.
I heard the eighth.
Sometime in September.
We had three, day, seventh. Does anybody got the right?
Monday, the eighth.
It was the eighth.
The gospel says the eighth.
On the eighth.
Okay.
Okay.
Bill's got a good word on that.
On the eighth. So, anyway, two weeks is what we were looking at regardless, and so the first thing that comes to mind on a nice ninety-some degree day is the pool, and we were able to confirm that we would have at least enough staff to operate that for the first week.
We do not have confirmation yet that we have enough staff to operate it the second week. Just looking at past years, you're looking at about twenty-six hundred bucks a day operating costs and, or wait, I'm sorry, I think that was for the week. And, yeah, sorry, expensive pool. But you're also looking at, we, in those last few weeks of the seasons in the past, we've also had about seventeen hundred bucks in concessions and, you know, daily passes, so looking at about a nine hundred dollar a day expense overall.
Day or week?
Week.
Week.
Hey, I didn't keep us here this late. It's already going, okay.
So Dwight, just to be clear...
Yes.
A net of revenue cost of nine hundred dollars a week to keep the pool open, to entertain the Moscow kids that aren't in school?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and of course, that's just based on old averages. Typically, at the end, that's, you know, kids are burned out on the pool and, you know, so attendance drops, things like that, but in this case, you know, they, they've got a two-week respite from school and, there's not a whole lot...
They're not burned out as mama is.
Correct. Exactly.
It's arm wrestle time.
So, I, we do have a few other things, the after-school program would start as it would already, so there would be stuff going on, activities going on over at the Egan, but that doesn't start till three PM. All of our staff that operate those programs over there are college, and the college is not delaying, so we've lost our, our staff for that. But we do have an adventure program, or the school district does, so we would be trying to promote and push kids that direction. And also, the Herc, the floor will, is, at the end of this week, will be ready to be played on again. Eric's, or Greg's been working with some of the different coaches to see what kind of skills camps and things like that that we can put on. Those would be fee-based, but also free time, you know, drop-in play, things like that would take place as well. So in a nutshell, that's what we have on basically a one-day notice. What we would be asking tonight is authorization to continue operating the pool, which is beyond the season that we had estimated. Looking at the budget, I think we'll still come in under what we ended up with, or at least, I don't think we would exceed it much from what we budgeted anyway. But we had one of those exceptional years this year, the pool kept operating, and we had lots of hot days, so even though revenues are up, that also means expenses go up because you have staff working so much more. But it's still, based on our original way of budgeting the pool, we still have a little bit left there to play with, and I think we would be fine with this. And then again, when it comes to the pool, all we have confirmation of is just the first week, and we'll still work, and hopefully, we would know tomorrow whether we could finish out a second week if it's needed.
Question for you, Dwight, now, these things that you proposed and these extra activities, are they gonna be put on a website so people can see where they're, what's going on?
Oh, yeah.
So people will know?
We, we would, we would use all the media outlets that we can, we also put information out on the, on our Facebook page.
Perhaps a newspaper could write a nice little article.
And some of this will be a work in progress as we go, too. A lot of instructors, things like that, which we're not available to, to talk things over, so we'll just do what we can to give them something to do that's fun.
Okay, before I get to, so the biggest thing you're looking for is for the council to approve, keeping the pool open for at least one more week, is that correct? Two weeks?
Two weeks.
And just the advantage?
Authorization to.
And then if you don't have enough bodies for the second week, you guys close it, is that?
Yes.
Okay, Gary?
I'm sorry if I may have missed this, was there a discussion regarding whether to extend the season passes longer than the season had been anticipated?
Well, not tonight, we didn't, but that was part of the plan, is that the fees, basically all the fees that we currently charge would still be in place. We were, we, our plan was that season passes that people have already purchased would just be extended through the end. This year, it'll be interesting for you when we bring the final report, because the daily passes have just been way up there, so I don't think that that's, will be any cause for alarm.
One thing that you may find, Dwight, in my not very periodic driving through the parking lot of the pool and looking at license plates, I don't know that Pullman plans to wait to open their school system or anything, so some of those day passes you may lose because some out-of-town people's school will have started, so, you know, that'll be, that'll have some implication, whatever it is.
Could be, could be.
Tom?
I, I'd like to say that I'm gonna talk to the master swim group and see if there's any interest in making a contribution towards this additional cost, 'cause, you know, it could be that the master swim group might wanna say, hey, this is a good thing to, you know, get kids active and keeping them active at the pool, so I'll, I'll talk it up among those folks to see if there's any interest in making a, a small private donation towards, towards these additional costs.
Okay.
But I'd, I'd like to make a motion, if I may, to, to authorize the extension of the pool up to two weeks, keeping that open.
We'll second that.
Okay, Tom made the motion, and go ahead and give Dwight and the Parks and Rec Department approval to keep the pool open for two additional weeks, seconded by Dan. I'll start with, oh, you like that question?
I have a question. Do, do you need council action to look at other possible programs, even if they're fee-based, to try to entertain?
No, we have, there's, it's in the, in the proposed fee resolution tonight even, we have one item there that's for unknowns.
So this, this motion that's on the floor would, would...
Does what he needs.
Does what, Wayne says does what you need.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we'll start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, six to zero, thank you, Dwight, very much for that presentation. Now we'll move on to item number six, draft ordinance amending peddlers, solicitors, canvassers, secondhand dealers, pawnbrokers, vendors, et cetera. Rod will be doing the presentation, Rod Hall, you have the podium, sir.
Good evening, the Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members. I was asked to look at providing the process for business license renewals. Currently, the city provides business licenses for taxis, secondhand dealers, pawnbrokers, vendors, and we provide proof of registration for peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers. And on all these applications, the city requires background checks, which include fingerprints and Idaho State Police and the local criminal history checks. Currently, the city also has a renewal process for taxis that only require new fingerprints every five years. I was asked to look about amending the ordinances to provide a renewal process for the other licenses and include only requiring fingerprints every five years rather than a new application and fingerprints every year. This, the result will be that, right now, the taxi renewal will actually, will cost a little bit more, that was going up, but as of now, the city does not get fully reimbursed for the actual cost of doing the background checks. And the renewal process will include reduced fees for most other licenses that are being renewed because you won't have to do the full fingerprint background, but we will continue with the Idaho State Police and the local criminal history checks. And also, while I was going through the city ordinances, dealing with these business licenses, I thought it might be a good opportunity to provide, provide more uniformity to the process for licenses, licenses, including the application process, the renewals, denials, and the revocations. And that's what I did in what's before you tonight.
Okay, discussion for Rod? Tom?
One thing, I, this is off the fee thing, or, but it is part of the licensing. Section five dash ninety-eight, which I think is a reference to the taxicab, it's titled, it's on page eleven of twenty...
Okay.
...in the ordinance. It's in reference to smoking prohibited while taxicab service is being provided. I, I continue to see drivers smoking cigarettes while passengers are in the taxicab in Moscow. And I don't know if this is just an enforcement issue, or if the passenger is saying, oh, I wanna smoke too, so let's just all smoke, or, I don't know what's going on, 'cause I don't ride a taxi around in Moscow, and I wouldn't if it smelled like smoke anyway. I just, you know, is this an enforcement thing, what do you, do you know?
That would be an enforcement issue, I mean, I don't think, I mean, the taxi driver, because his passenger says, I don't mind you smoking, can't waive the requirement. It still would be illegal for him to do that.
So they're still supposed to just not smoke if there's somebody in the taxicab present? Okay.
Be like the bar saying, you can go ahead and smoke tonight.
Yeah, nobody, nobody's complaining, so we don't care. They can't waive that.
They can't do that.
They can't waive the ordinance.
Okay. Other questions for Rod?
And we're not, and we don't have a smoking fee, either.
No, it's not a fee. Okay. Thanks.
That will be, excuse me.
John's got something to add to that.
That would be, uh, something like, enforcing that would be like getting cops to chase cats.
We've listened to that in the past, and that's probably not gonna happen.
Not a bad analogy. What's that? It's not a bad analogy. You know? I have a question.
Okay.
Um, having, Tom having led me to this page, do we know if, if fares are displayed in the taxicabs operating in Moscow?
They're supposed to be. I, I do not know that answer.
As usual, even though this is an ordinance-
Rats in cab.
And, uh-
Needing taxicab.
If there's anybody in the public that would, that's sitting out there, like to comment on this, I'd like to hear him come to the podium at this time. If there's anybody out there that wants to talk on this ordinance before the council makes a decision here. Saying none, we will go ahead, and I'll turn it over to the council. Walter?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and the ordinance be read by title and published by summary.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Walter made the motion, seconded by Tom, to approve the ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and the ordinance be read by title and published by summary. I will start the roll with John.
Hi.
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 And that passes six to zero. Thank you very much. And now, I will read, this ordinance is 2014-13. Okay, ordinance number, uh, 2014-13, in ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, and Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for the amendment of the Moscow City Code Title IX, Chapters 3, 4, 5, and 11, to make more uniform the application, background checks, denials, revoke, revocation, and renewals of city-issued licenses or proof of registrations for peddlers, solicitor, or canvasser, secondhand dealers, and/or pawnbrokers, taxicab operators, or taxicab owners, and vendors, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Okay, we will move on to item seven, and this is Dwight, the cyclocross course proposal by Dwight Curtis.
Okay, I'll thank you again. Tonight, we have a cyclocross course proposal that was brought to the, let's say, I guess, Administrative Committee last week, and just, one of the things that I get a lot of questions about is, what the heck is cyclocross? And I've got the, you know, we're requesting this cyclocross bike course, and it'd be located on the northern part of the property out there on West Pluse River Drive. Estimated overall cost of this is, to develop it, is about $4,700, with an annual operating cost of $880. And cyclocross is a form of bicycle racing, and it consists of, of course, featuring an area's natural terrain, and it's, it's not limited to, to really anything, it's just whatever's there. And it also includes various obstacles, and the riders dismount and carry their bikes around some of the obstacles, some of them they go over, and some they go around, so, um, now, in case you brought your popcorn, let's see here, show you a real quick video of this, this will help explain a lot, and if you could, as this is going through, notice on where the kids are riding their bikes, you'll see that it's just a dirt path, that the pathway was actually created by the bikes themselves. And then, if you'll notice on the sides of those bikes, where the grass is mowed, that's kind of our maintenance area. That's where, you know, you'll have one swipe with the mower, and it takes care of both sides of the path, and, and that's it. So, anyway, that's just something to see as we, as you go through this.
I'm here, guys.
Thanks, Megan.
Hey, you stay on.
Oh, you see.
Hey.
I think I'm on some trouble upstairs.
I'm gonna get mud setting higher.
I'm gonna get mud setting higher.
Stop hiding in the grass.
No.
Bring in Rocket Cheetos. What was the best part of going out on that lap? Going down hills, okay? What else? You guys saw everybody? What's that? Everybody liked going down hills. You guys liked the box? Uh-huh. Up and down? Cool. Well, you guys wanna try another lap?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was that worth the price of admission, or what?
You know, it's always good to see kids on bikes, having fun, and doing some physical activities, I like that.
Yeah. Okay, um, originally, this project proposal was brought to staff's attention by local biking enthusiasts and members of the Pluse Bicycle Racing Organization. We have Matt Mora and Jerry Long, Matt's in the audience here, still awake. You might have seen Matt in the newspaper here not long ago, he was the winner of the, I don't remember what the name of the race is, but they, they go up the old Lewiston grade on bikes, and, so, he's a biking animal. But, um, anyway, this, uh, this is, this is what we're proposing. Uh, this is not exact, but it's a, it's a basic layout of where we're talking about, and how it would be laid out. And we have a parking lot, it's a small 10-car parking lot on the western side, that would have to be constructed, we're just talking gravel, and then, of course, the pathway zigzag in and meandering around through the property, and the little red dots are just my version of where possibly different obstacles might be located. This, this particular project is, we consider temporary. This could be, uh, this property could be developed into whatever we want at any time, so with that, I mean, it's very, very low impact on, on anything and everything. This is a view from West Pluse River Drive, looking west, and same road, looking east, and this here is out on the Fountain Property, where they have had their temporary track in the past. And this is the pump track over at PCEI. It's a lot smaller, and if you noticed, if I, if I've got this right, in the film, you saw the one kid, and they said, "This is how you do it," and he's just pumping away, taking advantage of the, of the hills, and, and so you don't do a whole lot of pedaling, you use gravity and, and the pumping to, to make yourself go, where our course is a lot longer, and, and we would not be constructing all those, all those hills like that, you use the terrain that's there and the few obstacles. This is just a quick shot of, of a similar course, it's up, I believe, in Court Lane, and this was done by our engineering folks. You can see where the, where the parking lot is. This was checked out to ensure that it was safe as far as alignments. There is a hill over here to, to the east, to make sure there was no site alignments for, you know, hazard when people would pull in and out of the parking lot, and it was deemed safe. And, uh, the cost of this project, like I said earlier, development cost is about $4,700, the small parking lot, the trail, there's no cost to that, the obstacles would be donated, we have a trash receptacle, an extra one on hand at the shop, annual operating cost of about $880, 630 of that would be for a porta potty, and, and then, some gas and labor costs to go buy and pick up any trash that might be there. And, key points to this, it's very neighbor-friendly, it's a, in itself, it's a very quiet sport. The gathering places where people would mostly be, where you would have the people noise, would be over by the parking lot, anyway, away from the, the developments. There's no power, there's no sound systems, no lights, any of that kind of stuff. This fits in with our Parks and Rec Master Plan that was adopted this last December, fits in, definitely fits in with the healthy, active lifestyles. It's good use of this property, it's low development costs, low annual operating costs, it's volunteer-oriented, usable for all ages, concentrating here, anyway, with youth, but it would be available for any age. And, and right now, there's, the land is being farmed for hay, and that would still be able to take place, even with this path, it would just, basically, the only things that would be different is he would just have to go around the obstacles, so he could drive right over the path with his, with his tractor. And, of course, this is just very, very low impact on the property itself. And I believe that is the presentation, and opened any questions? This would be constructed this spring, if, if approved.
Walter?
Dwight, you said they're currently on the Fountain Property?
Yes.
Why do they wanna move?
Um, if I could, I'll have, Matt answer that question for you?
Yeah, please.
Please.
Dwight, why don't you introduce Matt to?
Yes, this is Matt Mora, he's with the Pluse Bicycle Racing Club, and also, one of the proposers of this project, and, and one of the leads on the, what's already existing over on the Fountain Property.
And he won, I made the grade, right?
Last year, and one time before. The Fountain Property is private property, as you know, and it's getting harder and harder to get access to that property. The, the main driver for that is Joey Fountain, and his wife moved to Seattle, and so they don't mow it or maintain it anymore, and access has become a problem. And so, without someplace to go, we're kinda locked out of that property.
Okay, so it's effectively no longer available?
No, I wouldn't say it's no, it is still available this season, probably, so that'll be up through, starting in September, up through probably November, but after that, we don't know. And even this season, it's been kinda questionable about whether we can get in there. We have to do all the mowing now, it used to be that the Fountains would help us with some of that, and now, it's all on, on all of the club members to, to try to find financing and find a tractor and be able to do all that kinda stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Matt.
A question for Gary. Gary, I presume any added liability to the city would just come under our liability policies, and-
Exactly.
Parks and Rec, and Dwight picks up anything that's above our coverage and out of his pocket, and-
Like he does now.
Perfect.
On that note, since Dwight's gonna cover any additional, I'd move that we approve development of the cyclocross course on the north side of the West Pluse River Drive property, and authorize funding in the amount of $5,330, $5,330 for the gravel parking lot construction, and the ADA porta potty rental for fiscal year 2015.
I'll second that.
Okay, Dan made the motion, Tom seconded, to approve this development of the cyclocross course on the north side of the West Pluse River Drive property, and authorize funding in the amount of $5,330, $5,330 for the gravel parking lot construction, and the ADA porta potty rental for fiscal year 2015.
I'll second that.
Okay, Dan made the motion, Tom seconded, to approve this development of the cyclocross course on the north side of the West Pluse River Drive property, and authorize funding in the amount of $5,330 for gravel parking lot construction, and an ADA porta potty rental for fiscal year 2015. I will start with Art.
Hi.
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 And that, and that passes six to zero, so-
You got a question?
No, I was just gonna, I was just gonna have an anecdotal comment about, I got a second cousin who is a dedicated videore, and was frankly, sorry, Tyler, but you were turning into a self-basting butterball, and he came along with the cyclocross thing, and got into that heavily, and shaped right up video used decrease, and he's a whole lot healthier kid now.
Cool.
So, here's a little story for you.
Uh, another anecdotal piece to add, as, as was mentioned, there's a, a pump track out at PCEI at the Nature Center, and we have had terrific experiences out there with parents and children and so forth using it. Twice, I've had parents of children who have not been motivated, or have had reason to not be able to ride or want to ride a bike, just in general, suddenly get very excited by watching other kids and, and become engaged, and, and it's actually helped a couple of parent, a couple of parents have said that this has actually helped their kids get more engaged in school. And so, in addition to the, just the physical activity and, and the involvement with riding bikes, we've heard that some of these parents have said that it's helped their kids be more motivated at the school, too, so that's good. Good, good things are happening, I think, with seeing some of these things.
Very good. Well, thank you, Dwight. With that being at the end of the gen, and we'll go into reports, and we'll start with admin. Tom, is there anything you wanna?
Yeah, well, everything that we've had at the last admin has come forward. We did have a conversation about the restrooms in, or the restroom, the proposed restroom in downtown Moscow, and we're going to get more information on that, I believe, in the next few weeks or so, and that's gonna come back to us, so that conversation continues.
Walter?
Um, everything on Public Works Finance was attended to tonight. The only other item I've got is that I, and possibly the mayor and other council people may have attended the National Night Out that was out at Eastside Marketplace, and the comments I remember hearing from the police department was that they felt it was better attendance than the previous year, and they were quite pleased with it, unless Gary or some other council member knows something different.
I, I attended the one in Potlatch, and it was very well-attended, it was-
They've, they've been going longer than we have.
Yeah, it was, it was great, it was fun to see that. I helped size some kids with bicycle helmets.
Okay, Wayne, do you have any reports?
Well, let's see, couple of meetings, Historical Preservation Commission met on the 24th of July, and, pretty simple meeting, they reported that your Orchid Awards had been given out at the McConnell Mansion Ice Cream Social, they are continuing to discuss questions for the citizen survey, and, um, they look like they're going to put out a fall issue also for Preservation Moscow publication, maybe just like a quarter-page, 'cause this one was so successful. And then, LEDC had their monthly meeting, got some new members on the board, and as you know, Martin Urkola was elected president of LEDC, look forward to his moving forward with some positive things. LEDC has been talking about how they can interface without copying what some of the other development, economic development councils, such as SEDA and PKC are doing. And, um, I told them about the Moscow Pullman Airport situation, and they, as a whole, supported it, and a motion was made and accepted to send a letter of support for the expansion of the airport, and to send that to all the relevant government agencies.
Uh, the, uh, last urban renewal meeting, we also spent some time and accepted the budget, uh, for, uh, next year, and then, uh, with the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, planning and zoning, accepted the Thompson Property final plat, and there are two or three other things that are gonna, that they, um, are, uh, going to accept, or, actually, we're gonna get a chance to go through them here. And, uh, we've got the, uh, Chodo for the, uh, affordable housing is still jumping through hoops. For HUD and Idaho Housing, we're getting closer, so hopefully, we'll be able to report some real progress on that shortly. And then the, um, Human Rights Committee meets tomorrow for, so, you now know what I know.
Well, the only report that I'm gonna mention is we had Ed Button's retirement luncheon today. Uh, for those that missed that, it was a very nice luncheon, so, Gary, do you have any reports you'd like to add?
Sir, I don't, thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion from somebody...
May I would move adjournment?
Second, okay, all in favor, aye? Opposed? This meeting is adjourned, folks, it is nine fifty-two.